Order, it's eight thirty. Welcome, January twentieth. Nice sunny couple of weeks.
Windy.
And windy. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda is our new consular business. Anything from council? Well, good. Well, not good, but. Item three is our minutes. The minutes of our regular meeting of council on January sixth, two thousand and six fourteen. Moved by Councilor McFadden, seconded by Wilbur. Any discussion? Were there any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Is there any business arising of the minutes? Correspondence, item five point one. Consular Malkinson?
I move that we grant permission for the use of the regular area in the memorial arena for the event that the senior Canucks are requesting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Seconded by Consular Schuman. Discussion? For the seniors alumni game with the Montreal Canadiens old time works team? January, February seventh? Just for the benefit of our people visiting us through the media. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five point two. Consular Schuman.
I move this for information.
Move for information. Seconded by Consular McFadden. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five point three, a letter from Wynne Powell, Board Chair of B.C. Emergency Health Services. Consular Kenny, move?
Move for information.
Thank you. Seconded. Consular Malkinson. Discussion? Consular Malkinson?
Well, I was gonna ask a broad question, your worship, about this piece of correspondence. I was wondering if it's, if this news has, well, sorry, this R.A.P. has positively impacted our particular responding services when it came maybe to the fire department or something. I was wondering if it, if it's had any positive impact on, or if we've been able to implement any of the findings of this report.
Through to Jim.
Through your worship, this is actually their internal report. We don't get access to the statistics, but I think you all get access to public feedback. And I think it would be a stretch to say you're hearing that ambulance service is better in our community than it was in the past. I think you're hearing the reverse.
Consular Wilbur?
My thoughts are kind of the same as Consular Mounds, because I'm just wondering how our fire department felt about it. And just coming from the history I have, it was always my understanding that when you heard the sirens and the lights, you pulled over. So not using them, I'm wondering how that affects our traffic control going to emergency. When someone calls nine one one, they expect a quick response. And I know our teams are very good at that, but I'm just wondering if our fire department actually had any opinion on this or had any input in on it.
Through your worship, generally, our response vehicles will use their sirens and lights. The, there are pinch points. You all know about driving around this town, and one of them is right out here at the Thirteenth Street and Alaska intersection. And we will almost always use our lights and sirens through the intersections, based on our own safety protocols. And I think there might be, as there often is, a gap between the conceptualization in an office in Victoria and the on-the-ground response. My office is right there. The ambulance service is right there. You'd never see an ambulance pulling out of there without the siren on and the lights flashing. So I'm not really sure this has been actualized in our area.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We'll move through our delegations until nine o'clock. We'll go to item seven, our reports. Seven point one, a report from the Chief Financial Officer on our gaming report. Moved by Consular Malkinson, seconded by Consular Schuman. Discussion? Consular Malkinson?
Your worship, it mentions in the report that we, for the last year, and, well, I think the last two years, 2012 and 2013, we had put gaming funds towards the Calvin Crook Center. I was wondering where we had put it beforehand. I don't, well, I don't believe I was on council before that, but it just raised my curiosity.
Through your worship, in the previous years, it was community grants, anything that had public good to the community. So it was minor expenses. With Calvin Crook, it was an area that was for the public good of the community, and it was approved in last year's budget to allocate those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item seven point two, report number fourteen dash zero zero eight from the Director of Corporate Administration, read the appointment of our election officials. Consular McFadden, Consular Malkinson. Discussion?
Is that time again?
It seems so early.
Consular Malkinson?
Just, just a point of information, your worship. Perhaps it might be good to actually read out the recommendation for the benefit of the viewing public?
Perfect.
Yes.
Read away, my son.
Well, I didn't move it. You moved it, Terry.
You wanted to read it, so you read it.
Okay. What we're voting on is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the appointment of election officials being received. And further that pursuant to section, or sorry, Part Three, Section forty-one of the Local Government Act, Brenda Ginter, will be appointed the Chief Election Officer for conducting the 2014 general local election, with the power to appoint other election officials as required for the administration and conduct of the 2014 general local election. And further, that Tyra Henderson and Janet Loisel be appointed as Deputy Chief Election Officers for the 2014 general local election.
Thank you. And that 2014 general election is scheduled for November fifteenth, 2014. Eye hole. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item seven point three, we have a report number one four zero zero nine from the Director of Infrastructure. Consular Wilbur, move?
Yep. That report number fourteen dash zero zero nine from the Director of Infrastructure, Sustainable Development, regarding development permit number fourteen dash zero one amended amendment be received. Further, that the amended development permit number fourteen dash zero one for the development of a commercial gas station at one one six two four Eighth Street be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of financial security.
Thank you. Seconded by Consular Schuman. Discussion? Consular Wilbur?
I just think this amendment actually will alleviate some of the traffic along that corridor and stuff. And good to see McDonald's and Canadiens are working together to do that on their own.
Yeah, absolutely. I think when I saw the amendment, and you see that we had, part of the discussion, I think Consular Malkinson raised at our last meeting, was that congestion along the access road and what the impacts of that would be for further development. And so this is one aspect of it, as you say, is very positive, I think, for the development of that area. The businesses are working together to ensure that it's for the better of that development area. So good for them both. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item seven point four, report number one four zero one two. Consular Malkinson? Yep. Yep. Consular Schuman?
I move that report number fourteen dash zero one zero from the Director of Infrastructure, Sustainable Development, regarding the development berm, permit berm concern at eighty-six hundred twenty-first Street better be received. Further, that the development permit number thirteen dash three one be approved.
Thank you. Moved by Schuman, seconded by McFadden. Discussion? Consular Wilbur?
I just have, I have a few concerns. I know I brought this back for rezoning, which has nothing to do with the development permit. But at that time, the developer did put forward that they would put in a berm. And so the residents in that area are now concerned that that has changed. And I'm just, I see that there's a concrete wall here with a fence on top of it and vegetation. And I'm just, I think total eight feet is what the fence and that wall. So I'm just wondering how high that wall is expected to be, and is it gonna handle the drainage? So part of my concern, I guess, is under three point four is the storm water. What would we consider to our satisfaction? How, I mean, what, do we have a bar that we set that says it can handle this much water or this much flow? So that's a concern that's been brought forward to me. The other thing is, the original separation was a little bit higher. So it was to alleviate the residents there. So that was a meeting between the developer and the residents. And now they're concerned that, once again, they were shafted on the original development they bought into, and they're feeling a little bit shafted now. So those are concerns. The other concern I have is the hundred thousand dollars being put forward. Why would we pay part of it back during certain completion phases? Why would we not hold that until the phase was completed and then return it, and they can pay it back again for the second phase? That was, I think, part of the problem we ran into originally with the first development in that area was that we had paid back portions of the funds. Now we're left with X amount of dollars, but the work's gonna cost more. So as we know, prices increase, and I'm just wondering why we would not keep that bond until phase one was completed? And the last thing that was brought forward was the vegetation that's gonna be put in. Are they consulting with the city horticulturists to make sure the vegetation put in is going to last and be good for our area? So those are concerns that have been brought forward to me, and I'm bringing them forward to the table.
Okay, thank you. So.
So perhaps through you to staff, maybe they can answer some of those questions.
All right, we'll move those through.
Well, unless Consular McFadden would like to add to the list, so we can respond to all of them.
Yeah, thank you. My question is, does this materially, does this application change the concept to the point where we have to go back to a ten-day notification period to give the folks out there a chance to comment at a public hearing or a public meeting? I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's changed it to the point where that has to be done? Apparently not. Staff says it's recommended that it be approved, but I'm just curious with that.
Thank you.
Through your worship, I'll answer the last one first and then turn it over to Kevin for some of the technical questions around drainage and vegetation. The, and bonding. The proposal that the citizens were notified of is the proposal without the berm. So we have the responses from them on that proposal. It's up to you what you do with the responses, but they've been notified that there'll be no berm. That's exactly why there was response.
And then I'll kick it over to Kevin for the.
So through your worship, on the, start with the drainage. So we looked at that, and from our perspective, that what they're proposing with the wall, the grading, the curb and gutter on site, that would handle, I believe, the concerns of the residents, which felt that that drainage was coming through the back of their property. So, and I know I did, one of the residents was, actually happened to stop by the offices this week and looked at that and kind of concurred with our thoughts on that. So we certainly feel from that aspect, the drainage issue will be handled on site and addressed. Secondly, the vegetation. We can certainly ensure that when it comes to that point, that they can be put in touch with our horticulturists to ensure that the species that they're wanting to plant, obviously, are appropriate for what they had shown in the drawing was, looked like some evergreens and whatnot, which would accommodate, I think, what we want. So, and on the bonding, I thought, and I don't have it in front of me, but my belief was that we would maintain that for that first phase. And again, if the wording is different than that, I apologize. I thought we held on.
The wording in the development permit is, "The permitty shall deposit and maintain with the City of Dawson Creek financial security in the total amount of one hundred thousand dollars until all the development and construction to be undertaken on the lands in phases one and two, as illustrated in Schedule F, are completed in its entirety, which is to be within twenty-four months from the date of the issuance of the permit." "Notwithstanding the foregoing, the financial security may be reduced proportionately as phases of the building construction are completed and accepted by the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development." That is discretionary to the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development as it's worded now.
Thank you. Does that get your list?
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to put it out there and make sure we had the answers, so if anyone comes forward, they're there.
Actually, the one item remaining is the question of height and privacy.
Privacy, yeah.
And the fence will not be as high as a berm. But on the privacy issue, the question is, is it noise abatement or is it view lines? If the proposed four-story apartment building is built, you would have to have a hundred-foot-high wall to take care of view lines. The opinion of our infrastructure department is that the fence will have the same noise abatement effects as a berm.
Thank you. Consular Wilbur?
Just to add to that, I would think that if you built a two- or three-story home, the sightlines would be very similar. You're not gonna get away from that. My neighbors can see in my backyard, and I'm sure we all have that. So it's just, goes with having neighbors.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
Yeah, and I actually like this idea of the fence and the cement better with the trees, because I've seen so many people try to plant trees on berms and just watch them wither and die. So, I mean, we saw that in, in the report, and so I was, I was happy with that change.
Thank you. Any further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item seven point five, we can just bring Consular Malkinson back in. I don't want him to miss this. Good morning. Consular Schuman?
I move report number fourteen dash zero one one from the Director of Corporate Administration be received. Further, that staff be directed to increase the city's effort within the economic development with less of a focus on the oil and gas industry and more towards small businesses and families relocating to Dawson Creek. Further, that the staff be directed to post a request for proposals for a Dawson Creek promotional video.
Thank you. Seconded by Consular Kenny. Discussion? Consular Kenny?
Yay! So if I'm, if I may, I just would like to speak to this. As in these first three or four months of having and assuming the responsibility as directed by council for economic development through the mayor's role. So first of all, it's been very, very interesting, challenging, and I, and I got it a little bit when I went to Calgary with the opportunity of trying to promote the message of the City of Dawson Creek and what we're doing as the first step in terms of that view, for me, of having limited, really limited knowledge and expertise on economic development and more about really relationship building. I kind of how I feel about it, and I floundered a little bit. One aspect, though, that about this video for me is, we need, it's, that video is five or six or seven years old that we're currently using. I think we need to update it. And the message to me that I talked to with Hank Bridgman about is the concept who developed that first one and who's done a ton of work in the community about that, was really about the quality of life and that we offer in our community. And to me, that's the focus, the message, that I really believe we should be promoting in terms of why industry, why community developments will occur in our community, is as a result of the quality of life we offer. And so I wanna try to bring that message into that video and that promotional material that we develop for our community. And this is, I guess, just one step that I think I need, we need to do now. But further, as we get through budget deliberations in the year, it's really an area for me of economic development that I really want to do some work on, because I think we need to put some structure in place for economic development. And I don't feel comfortable being the cap that's leading that, because I don't have the expertise to do it. So I wanna make sure we develop it in a, and having a sound structure for that going forward. But this is one aspect of it that I think, I believe we need to do in any event. And so I really appreciate council considering it.
Consular Kenny?
Has there been any thought in how, how it would be distributed? Like, would there be enough videos that, like, putting on the website is great, but would there be an opportunity to have enough, because to make copies of them isn't a huge expense, that we could give them to the different businesses in order to attract, you know, people?
Yeah, I thought it were that I think we're gonna be able to download them onto the memory sticks?
Yeah.
And just deliver them that way. So we can do that ourselves, I think, even. And so it's, once we get the video done, get it on our website, and then we can download it. So we can distribute it widely at that point, rather than the little discs, the little CDs that we've had. We can put them right on a memory stick.
And I'm just thinking, like, for the promotional value, like, not everybody goes on the website.
Yeah.
Not like, you know, companies, they don't, they don't, if they're not aware that this tool's on the website, then they're not going to be directing people to it, eh?
Yeah, no, I, I think we need to develop that as part of the strategy going forward in terms of how we manage economic development. And the communication component to it.
Consular Schuman?
Yeah, and if there's a, you know, we can share the links and link people to, to it on the website additionally. So I, I'm just really pleased with this. I look forward to seeing the end product.
Perfect. Further discussion? Consular Parslow?
Yeah, I'll be voting against this. You know what I think about some of these areas of economic development? Not against modernizing, updating the video, but the preamble to this recommendation I'm not comfortable with and some of the contents of the report. It seems to me that, you know, in anything we do, we need to make sure that we're not widening our fiscal gap. And some of the tenor of the report concerns me. And so the recommendation attached to this report is not acceptable in its format. But I'm not against the latter part of updating our video.
Thank you. And I guess, for me, is, hopefully, maybe I didn't explain it well, but I really need, we, I think we really need to engage that conversation and discussion about our whole economic development strategy. And it does tie a little bit in terms of our overall vision and strategy. And so I do kind of wrestle with that component, as Consular Parslow has indicated, in terms of how and what we do with the financial components of the things that we do every day, need to be tied to that overall vision and the strategy. But as I looked at this video, I also recognize, I think, that we need to be, continue pushing, trying to push that message forward of how we, how we display our community in every aspect of it. And so that's why I wanted to bring it forward at this point. Thank you for that.
Further discussion? Consular Wilbur?
I'm just wondering, given a good portion of what's coming in and coming at us is a result of oil and gas. So I'm just wondering, I guess, what you see the change in direction is? Because those small businesses and large businesses coming in are directed at oil and gas. So it is a main, a good pull for us to our community. The other thing, I'm just wondering, you know, we initiated a proposal, which is, that's fine, and we have a cost, and yet we won't, you know, we're not gonna disclose the information on that quote. So how do we create a fair playing field to put out an RFP? What's the criteria? If we're basing, this is what we, the quote that we wanna go forward on, how does anyone else providing a bid know what our criteria is? What are we basing that on?
Yeah, and so that's, I guess, part of it for me was this, you know, I don't, I don't want it to be a message that we're trying to attract the oil and gas industry to our community. I wanna attract the development of our community in terms of small business, industry. And I wanna attract an image of our community that is a high and a strong quality of life. And so through that, you would develop the amenities, to me, as one component of it, the amenities we offer, including every aspect of health, education, recreational activities, arts and culture, all those things, and build that into your message. And so we gotta develop that criteria as we put out the request for quotes on it. From that perspective is how I'm kind of envisioning it.
Consular Malkinson?
And this, well, these, you know, you know, advocating, or sorry, making people aware of the quality of life that we have in Dawson Creek, sort of maybe shifting the focus of the efforts of the video would be sort of tied together with this work that we've been doing, meeting with developers, and you know, this whole, I suppose it's all part of this, this strategy that we're yet to see completely enveloped or unrolled yet. Isn't that right?
Yeah, I think so. It's part, that's, the development of your community is one component of what's happening and what we're engaging in, and we understand. But, and for me, the, the real issue is, what do we want to present to people who are looking at our community as a potential place to invest and/or live? And so that, and so our message has been Dawson Creek is a sustainable community, and that's been a key foundational piece. And I think we continue to build on that, and in an overall, and it's one component of the strong quality of life that our community offer. And so it's just a component to it, and I think that's how, look, I'm, I'm happy to have anybody join in on this with me, because I clearly am not, economic development was not my background. It's come in over these three or four months. So, Consular Parslow?
Yeah, everything that's been happening around here has been tied to the oil and gas, and I hope that continues in a sense. With, I do have some concerns, you know, environmentally about it. But as we recognize economic development, I went through with some people, the, all the companies that were coming, they're all tied to supporting in one way or the other, economic development or expansions because of the economic development oil and gas has brought with us. And I think that's, living here for thirty-odd years, I think that's a welcome change to what we've had in the point of view of a flat economy. I wouldn't hate to go back to the days, the eighties especially. But I think, with all due respect, I don't think you answered the question that Consular Wilbur put to you. I don't expect you to be able to answer. I think the staff would be able to. As I understood the question, and if I may, aren't you concerned about the, you said the level playing field? I took that to mean, okay, if there is to be this video, you've already met with an, a party who, who does good work. Don't get me wrong here, who may bid. Were you asked in how will we tender that work now? Is that, have I misunderstood your question?
Well, yes. I mean, what I'm, what I, we've put the price out there, but we said we're not gonna disclose the information we got in that quote. So I'm wondering, then, what do we base the criteria on for people to bid? Because they have to be bidding on the same thing. They have to know what we want in that video, what we're expecting, what the process is, has to be the same as this individual that's been approached. So I'm just wondering, how are we going to do that, to create that level playing field, so that we are transparent in moving forward?
Yeah, and honestly, when, when we, after that conversation and discussion, I, I'm basing it on the aspect of, first of all, here's some of the components of the updates that we're looking to do for it, for our community. And then because it's a, we believe is gonna be a certain amount, we have to put it out to tender. So honestly, I'm, I'm going on it on that basis, and I don't know how you level the playing field when we have had one conversation with one individual. But I gotta start it from there.
Consular Kenny?
I think when you're putting out the RFP for, like, the discussion that you had with the, with the first contractor, it would just be the identical information that would go out there without the price tag. Like, you've already had the conversation on what you want. Are you? Are you looking at another design, like, in the, like, for the video, like, the discussion that you had? You've kind of, you have a clear, do you have a clear picture on what you saw that looking like?
Yeah.
And so you would just take that conversation and put it down on paper or whatever written, written activities, deliverables that was given by, by the contractor, then that's what your RFP is. And then, then there's your level playing field. You don't talk about price. You just talk about the deliverables of what the expectations are with the video. And then on the other note about less focus on the oil and gas industry, I, I, I think I know where you're going with this, is that the oil and, and gas industry is here, and we don't need to put a big lens on the, on the oil, on the oil and gas, because it's. because it's happening, like, it's coming in like a bulldozer. Where you have your retail and your, and your other sectors that aren't getting the attention. There's a lot of businesses that are enjoying the, the economic development coming from, from the oil and gas industry. But there's still gaps in our, in our community, in the retail industry. There's, there's gaps there that maybe we could encourage some investment from, it could be foreign investment. It could be coming from the provincial nominee program or whatever, you know, that, and attracting investors into our community. And so to have a tool in order to do that, I think it's, it's really important. And if you don't have the tool, and any other community in the same shape, that's what you do. You, you provide tools to attract different, different investors into your community. So we have, we have the develop, and the developers, like, you know, the, the developers of different companies, they've been calling my office because of the South Peace Economic Development Commission and because of Community Futures itself. And I don't have the tools to provide, to provide them in, in their efforts. I don't have a, a package that I think is, is up to snuff to, to write, to provide to these investors. And sometimes you only have that one opportunity to talk. And if you don't have the information there, then you lose that opportunity and you go to another town that has it. So I, I think that this makes perfect sense. And, and when you talk to the people in the community that, you know, are complaining about no shoe store and, and a lack of retail, you know, maybe some of this, you know, this could be an attraction. It shows that it's a community that is interested in, in, in other investment. And then on another note, it's also the, the constant conversation that we're not getting, the people that are coming in with the new industry or expanded industry, the oil and gas industry, we aren't getting permanent residents. And so it's another tool to attract those permanent residents. And that's another thing that you hear from a lot of people and a lot of businesses. So I think, you know, you've, I think that we would be on the right track in pursuing this.
Thank you. So Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, a few comments. Of course, we, we, we know that cer- certain businesses in this town have, associated with the oil, gas industry, have come here through the hard work of some of our local business people who have gone out of their way to, with their contacts and brought them, brought them in. And I do know that other communities are also trying to, through their contacts, attract these, the oil, gas service sector, if you like. So there's, there's a real competition there for these high-paying jobs that are associated with the oil, gas industry. And I would hate to in any way deflect that vigilance. The retail sector throughout British Columbia, maybe in the, in the Western world, is in trouble. Because according to reports I've read and a program on that matter on public, American public services, that so many people are shopping online. And I think they said there was a fifteen or eighteen percent increase this Christmas period on online shopping. And so certainly shopping habits change. And if people don't change with the changes, they're going to evaporate. We see a lot of these small retail operations start up here and because of lack of business presumably, that they close. And I think unless there's a very vibrant oil, gas presence, I don't see any change in that phenomenon. And we have to realize that we, we, you know, we have two much larger communities that people drive to. And it is a very competitive market there. And it is tough for the retail sector, made tougher by the degree of online shopping that I'm sure all of us at some time or the other take part in.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, when I read this recommendation and I hear your comments, I don't see this as moving away from oil and gas. I don't, I don't see that that's what we're going to do with this video. I see that we're just going to add to it and make it more robust, include everything.
Sorry, if that was the assumption or the inclination or the information that this was designed to go after a particular segment or a particular industry, it wasn't. It was to promote the image of the community and the city of Dawson Creek of what we have to offer. And why would Encana or Art or Shell or Progress or Murphy or Apache, as an oil, gas industry as an example, say, why would we choose to live in Dawson Creek? Why would our employees, we don't, we assume they got great water and we assume they got great sewer and we assume they got great water. What else do they have for our employees? So we got, we got a good health system, we got good education, we got great recreational facilities, we got a great arts and cultural community. And so those are amenities that the employee who looks to relocate into a community says, why would I want to live there? I believe. And so to me, this is just one more feather in the quiver for us, I think, in promoting it. But the bigger picture for me is, in terms of this year, is having that conversation and discussion for all of us of, how do we want a message? How do we want the strategy of economic development for our community moving forward? Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move an amendment to the motion. I'd like to move amendment that essentially just reads that staff be directed to post a request for proposals for Dawson Creek promotional video.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Wilber? Discussion? Counselor Wilber?
I like that in the sense that when we talk retail and stuff and going after those businesses, which we should, then we also have to look at the dynamic of numbers. So that's what big retail looks at, is what area do you service? So we service, pardon my language, a hell of a lot bigger area than just the boundaries of Dawson Creek. So those are things I think that we have to ask and we have to, that have to be put in there. So I guess where I'm coming from, I want to see us promote our economic development. I want to support our local businesses. But at the same time, I want to know what that criteria is in building this video. And I want to make sure that we're encompassing everything we have to offer, including our service area. So I think we have a lot to put in there. I just don't think it's identified in here. And I would hate to move forward with RFPs not knowing what we expect that to be in the end. I want to know what that information is that we want them to provide for us.
Okay.
So we are covering it all and we're not saying in five years, oh, we missed this.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Implicit in my motion is the notion that the mayor would provide direction on the focus of the video for the RFP.
Okay.
You know what you, how you felt in Cowdery, you know the deficits. But I certainly recognize that, for instance, when there was some work done by Mayor Darlin and others around Walmart relocating here, it was the South Peace Economic area, you know, the outlying communities that I think from my conversations with Wayne swayed the, the decision of Walmart coming here. It just wasn't a Dawson Creek thing.
Sure. Jim?
So staff is monstrously confused now. And this is perhaps not clear to you that this is the mayor's report. This is not staff's report. We put this together for the mayor. Focus, less of a focus on oil and gas industry and more towards small business and families relocating to Dawson Creek is the mayor's direction as economic development officer. So what is it? Is it Counselor Wilber wishing this, a two-stage process where council would define those objectives? We can't put out an RFP that has no objectives in it. Or Counselor Parslow's, which is, the mayor sets those, which are already in the report. I just need to know what you want.
I guess I'm asking is what do you want? What, what do you see that criteria being? I, I guess, I'm...
And, and that's for me the overarching message of quality of life for our community and the amenities in which this city has those to offer. And it changes, updates that message that's been in that video that we're using today. So if we give a piece of information out today, it's seven or eight years old.
So this amendment to the original recommendation, do we not have to turn down the first recommendation?
No.
Like, we don't have to call it, so we just amend it? And so if we, if so, if you, if you vote against the amended recommendation, then it's...
The amendment dies and then we vote on the original. I just, I just do have to remark though that the RFP then will state, city of Dawson Creek is looking for a promotional video. Please submit your proposals. That's it. That's the only direction I have from you. You might want a two-stage that. You might want to meet as a council and direct your economic development officer. This is, just as an aside, doesn't matter if the economic development officer is a staff person or the mayor. Everyone's an expert on economic development and this is what you get on every conversation about economic development. But that's fine. Hold a special meeting, define your criteria and put out the RFP. Because we can't just put out an RFP saying we want a promotional video. We might get one promoting rollerblading. I don't know.
So...
I could make one.
Sorry? So any further discussion? Ready to vote on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated? On the original motion? Are you ready for the question?
Your worship.
Yes, Counselor Malkinson?
I, I kind of like the sound of what Jim said there. I, I don't think us meeting to discuss, discuss this a little more in detail would be a bad idea. You know, particularly about the economic development side of things, you know, the, the question of, well, some of the concerns, well, not concerns, but some of the things that he's raised there, I don't think would be a bad idea. Does anybody else like the thought of entertaining that? No? Terry doesn't like it? I know Terry's not down.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, from my perspective, first of all, I'm trying to move our...
Meeting along.
Our, no, our promotion of our community along. And, and so if, I guess the issue would be then, do you want to table it? And I'll bring it back through. And, and I'm assuming that's what is being talked about now.
I move that we table it and you can come back with this, with the outline of your video content. So that the RFP can be more flushed out.
You have a seconder?
Yep.
Counselor Malkinson? You're, I think tabling is non-debatable, right?
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed?
It's a two-two.
No. The all hands that didn't go up are in favor, yours included.
So tabling fails. Are you ready for the question on the original motion? All those in favor? Sorry? So the opposed?
Tabling, tabling captures the original motion. You know, it's tabled until we have this discussion that we just spoke about.
So it is tabled?
It's tabled. We don't have to vote on tabling.
Thank you.
It was, it was three to four, I imagine.
The opposed to tabling was Schuman and Kenny and the others were in favor. Thank you. So we'll go back. We're a little behind, so we'll get back on to our delegations. My apologies to the delegations. Item six point one. David Johnson, People First in attendance regarding the People First for Council Information. Welcome, David.
Thank you. When's our next one?
Yeah. Be back. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is David Johnson. I belong to a local People's First group in Dawson Creek. A lot of you don't know that Local People's First exists in Dawson Creek. We've been existing in Dawson Creek since nineteen eighty-four. We are a nonprofit organization that's run by disability self-advocates and we work on advocating on behalf of other disability people who have issues around Dawson Creek. And I am the president of the B.C. People's First Provincial Board. So I take those issues to, to down south and we talk about it provincially and we take, and we advocate to the government, provincial, federal, for more services for disability people. And a lot of their concerns that we have talked about is employment, affordable housing, accessibility in Dawson Creek, healthcare, that we don't get covered through automatists. We used to have our medical cover all our eye exams. Now we got to pay forty dollars every time we go. Dental care, that's not covered by our medical anymore. One of our concerns is that Dawson Creek is not assess, all the businesses in Dawson Creek is not accessible for disability people with wheelchairs or anything like that. And we feel that every business needs to be accessible for disability people. We even feel that the city needs to form accessibility committee. From what I understand, you guys don't have one. And accessibility committee that the city council has formed. And I know there's accessibility committee all over B.C. except here. So we would like to see city council form accessibility committee to deal with making every business accessible for disability people. We would like to invite some of our city council people to come to our People's First meeting, February third, two thousand fourteen, at seven o'clock P.M. at the Opportunity Center. So you can see what People's First is all about and that we can voice our concerns of what disability people would like to see in Dawson Creek more. We feel that the businesses aren't opening up to hire disability people in Dawson Creek very well. We would like to see that the businesses open their doors to disability people more and that every business in Dawson Creek hires disability people. So this is our concerns. So I just wanted to let you know what People's First is about. And we hope to work in partnership with the city council in the near future. Thank you.
David, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Wilber?
Good job, David.
Thank you, David.
And I'm going to attend that meeting because I, I have to tell you, David is a really good spokesperson, not only for our community, but for our province when it comes to being a self-advocate. So you've done a really good job, David, and you stayed calm. I'm proud of you. And I'm going to be at that meeting.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, this loss of eye care and dental care, when, when did that happen?
From what I understand, the dental care didn't agree with the government on, they had a contract with, with the government on government medical for disability people and all of it. And they declined that or something, from what my understanding is.
Was that recently, David, within the last year or so?
I believe in, yeah, last two years. It's been a while.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments for David? I just want to echo that. I certainly interacted with David when I was in Blair Lextrum's office. And he was always, you talk about passion for his cause and for the people that he's representing in our community and the province. I think he's done an outstanding job. I really appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to come here today. You've done a great job of informing us and hopefully we can help move that relationship forward in the future with you and People First.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Next item, item six point two, we have Michelle Mobley from Dawson Creek Literacy Now in attendance for proclamation on Family Literacy Day.
So of course, you know, you get to have a hug with the mayor when you come to... I'm not like him.
He can't resist.
So whereas Canada is an increasingly information-driven society, yet approximately nine million Canadians do not have the minimum literacy skills to be able to fully engage in the workplace or in their community. And whereas in nineteen ninety-nine, ABC Life Literacy started Family Literacy Day to celebrate adults and children reading and learning together. Taking time every day to read or do a learning activity with children is crucial to a child's development. Even just fifteen minutes a day can improve a child's literacy skills dramatically and can help a parent improve their skills as well. And whereas having strong literacy skills allows us to understand information and gives us the ability to make better decisions, helping to make our communities economically and socially stronger. And whereas the focus of this year's challenge is fifteen minutes of fun, and now therefore I do hereby proclaim, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, as Family Literacy Day in Dawson Creek. So as a very proud grandfather of six, there is nothing in the world that tops reading to a book or talking in my world. And so I just couldn't be more pleased to be able to present that proclamation today. And so I just couldn't be more pleased to be able to present that proclamation today.
We would just like to mention that this Saturday at the Corus Early Learning Hub is our third annual Welcome Baby Party from 11 until 1:00. And Literacy Now will be there, and they'll have tables set up. And we just want to talk to young parents in the community about the importance of early literacy, and that it really doesn't take long. Fifteen minutes is all it takes, and it's easy to incorporate into the things that you're all ready to do every day. I hope that if you know some parents with new babies from 2013, please send them our link.
Hang on, because I think we've got one coming.
2014?
The 2014? Thank you so much, you guys. I appreciate you coming to Council this morning. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Our next delegation is Julie Rogers, the Leadership Development Co-Chair, and Natasha Lacrosse Team Development Chair for the Canadian Cancer Society. In attendance today for the proclamation for February as the Relay for Life Registration Month for Dawson Creek.
Would you like to come up front so I can read the proclamation?
Can I, can I give you a little bit of a background on it first?
Yeah, but does that still mean that you're going to come up front?
I'll still come up after. And then you can do your bit, but I want to do my bit first.
All right, do your bit.
I'm sorry, Natasha couldn't be here with me this morning. She's off registering a team. As a new person to Dawson Creek, I'm going to tell you something you probably already know. Dawson Creek is an amazing community. Every single time you hear about tragedy striking a family in Dawson Creek, within hours you hear about the fundraiser and the list of people bringing over casseroles and who's picking up the kids. And this community takes care of each other. I've never seen that in any community before. And I know that when you hear, oh, Canadian Cancer Society, they're big. It's a big charity. They raise millions. And so you tend to think, well, you know, we take care of our own, but, you know, everybody else has got that down pat. They raise millions. They don't need our help. But cancer is that big. They raise millions because they really need to raise millions. When you consider that two out of every five Canadians will get cancer. Two out of five is a lot. One-third of all deaths in Canada are from cancer. So, everyone in this room very likely knows someone who has had cancer or who will get cancer. So this is something that does affect us right here in our community. It's big enough that it hurts every person in the community. Because when somebody gets cancer, it's not just that one's person. It devastates the entire family. And so, we relay. And last year, Dawson Creek had a Relay for Life, and they raised almost seventy thousand dollars. That Dawson Creek even has a Relay for Life surprises me, because that's kind of a big town thing. Most smaller communities won't do Relay because they're worried that if you do it, not enough people will come, and it'll be embarrassing. Dawson Creek's Relay is pretty good. This year, Dawson Creek's Relay is going to be amazing. We have a lot of fresh bases on the committee this year. It'll be on June 14th at Northern Lights College. I believe we had about 25 teams last year. And while we try to do conservative goals, I have no doubt that we can double it. Because this is Dawson Creek, and we look out for one another. And the Canadian Cancer Society, when we do the Relay, that money that we raise, it goes to research. It goes to prevention. And it goes to this community. We have a Canadian Cancer Society office in this community that provides services for families who have been afflicted by cancer. And that's a big deal, that we've got, we have the resources right here to provide support for those people. So some of those funds will stay right here in our community to help people in our community. This year's Relay will be Carnival for a Cure. So, you bring your picnic basket, and you bring your kids, and you bring your grandkids, and you stay for the day, and walk a few laps around the track, and go on the bouncy castle and listen to the entertainment. It's going to be 12 hours of really good time. So, as leaders in our community, in addition to the proclamation, I would request that each of you think of five people you know in the community who are also leaders, and ask them if they will form a team. City Hall employees have a team, and some of you are on that team, and I commend you for that. It's going to be a good day. But we need more teams. We need, we need February to really sign up as many teams as possible. And we do it early so that those teams have a chance to get together, talk about how they're going to decorate their tent. Are they going to wear costumes? How they're going to, how they're going to fundraise for their team. One of the teams last year, the team, one team alone raised ten thousand dollars. And there was, of course, a prize for that team. There are prizes, there's games, there's fun. And most importantly, there is support in the community for people with cancer. So I ask that you proclaim February Relay for Life Registration Month, so we can get this started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up so I can sign?
Good job.
Would you like to come up?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. Thanks for having me.
Whereas another Canadian is diagnosed with cancer every three minutes. And whereas the Canadian Cancer Society is working to eradicate all cancers and improve the quality of life for people living with cancer. And whereas Relay for Life is the Cancer Society's largest annual fundraiser. And whereas Relay for Life is an inspirational, fun, non-competitive, 12-hour fundraising event. And whereas Relay for Life brings communities together to celebrate life and fight cancer. And whereas Relay for Life teams can register now and begin planning fundraising activities. And now, and now therefore I do hereby proclaim February as Relay for Life Registration Month in Dawson Creek. And I have kicked off the Relay for Life as the first donation of a hundred dollars to begin the campaign.
And you're on the team.
I'm on the team.
I don't think that's a check. I think that's a piece of paper.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do you want to take a quick five-minute break before we go back into our agenda? Are you ready?
Yes.
Terry on? We'll take a quick five-minute break. So we'll get back into our agenda. We're on item, I believe, 7.6. We have a report from the number 14013, a report from the Fire Chief. Counselor Parswell?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report number 14-013 for the Fire Chief, the Firefighters Association Recreation Room Lease, be received. Further, the council waived the user fees and charges policy and endorsed the lease agreement with the Firefighters Association for a five-year term ending January 27th, 2019, with an option to renew for an additional five-year term upon approval of both parties.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman. Discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Sorry, Counselor Malkinson?
I apologize. Maybe for the benefit of the viewing public, your worship, it would be beneficial to explain maybe the waiver that's described, the user fees and charges policy in the recommendation.
Yes, Jim?
Through your worship, your policy says that when you're leasing a city-owned facility to anyone, you'll look at two methods. One would be full recovery of any incremental costs that the lease earns you. And the second would be market rates for similar space. So, a problem at the, there's three issues at the Fire Hall. First is that the lease is actually not in the nature of a commercial lease. It's in the nature of moral labor relations matter. It rose out of workplace issues that were addressed with the lease. Secondly, the space is in multi-use. At some points, it is leased space for the Firefighters Association for their own activities. But in other cases, it's our training room. It's an emergency command center when there's an emergency. It has multi-uses, so they don't have exclusivity of the use. And finally, you couldn't lease it commercially because you couldn't allow traffic from the dispatch and command center to it. So, it's just our suggestion that the fees and charges policy can't really be applied there. We couldn't come up with a number for you on that.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.7, report number 14007. Counselor Schuman?
I move the recommendation that report number 14-007 from the Deputy Director of Community Service regarding the RCMP Radiotech Building Lease be received. Further, the council approved the lease agreement between the city of Dawson Creek and the Royal Canadian Mounted Police regarding 10,000, 1,300 street for a five-year term. And further, that council directs staff to recover all costs associated with that lease.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilber. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.8, report number 14010 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure. Counselor Malkinson?
Move that we receive this report from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the local area service policy, and that we, the council rescind its local improvement policy and approve the local area service policy as presented, which stipulates that property owners pay only for the asphalt overlay portion and any new works not previously included on the street, subject to the required 30-day public review period.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman. Discussion? Counselor Parswell?
In looking at the three options that were presented, I am inclined to prefer option two, not the option three. And I would like to get some comments from staff on this. I mean, the problem with our present situation is that in some areas where we have necessary infrastructure, in this case, road improvements required, if the local benefiting group do not support it, it doesn't happen. So option three is a, as I read it, simply it would be reducing the cost to the local benefiting group and hoping that because it's a lesser amount, they may find it more affordable or more inclined to support it. But it would, could still happen that it wouldn't. I liked option two, as presented, in that we wouldn't have this sort of delay of necessary improvement to our infrastructure being held up by a group of people. It would be something that would be paid for out of the general taxes or a, through the normal capital procedures, but the total cost would be brought forward as the capital project. And that we would be able to get on with, to quote the option two as Shaun has presented, "Council could decide to pay 100% of the project cost of guarantee." And the words that grabbed to me, "timely upgrades and renewal of city infrastructure." And we do have infrastructure needs. And I think I would like to learn from staff why they chose option three over option two. Option two seems to spread the tax burden throughout the community and therefore is more likely to be done.
Through your worship, the essential reason why the recommendation is for option three is our history is option one. So our history is more of a user-pay philosophy. So, if a road is not identified as a collector, not an arterial road in any way, but designed primarily for the use of the residents of that street or avenue, you have required the residents to pay a portion of the cost. We've been doing that historically since the 70s. So that means that there are many long-term taxpayers in this town who have paid, well, you may recall Mr. Hutchison in front of you last year, the year before, now paying a second time for an asphalt overlay in his life on that block. And so many properties in town have paid once or twice, or in some cases, three times for overlays. And if you change from that model to a model where it's 100% borne by the entire tax base, you will have created, in our opinion, an unfair situation between previous taxpayers and future taxpayers. And there is no way we can afford to go back and refund everyone who has ever paid anything on the local surface. So, moving forward, we were seeking to still honor some of the user-pay philosophy that was in your previous policy, but make it more feasible. Costs of construction have gotten to the point where, you know, it is no wonder it's turned on if you're asking each property to pay over ten thousand dollars in a lump sum to get refurbished payment. And just because it's an older neighborhood now, they need to refurbish rather than simply recap. So, that was our thinking.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.9, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development on a strata conversion application. Counselor Schuman?
Move the report number 14-015 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding a strata conversion of existing four-plexes at 1601 102nd Avenue be received. Further, that the strata conversion of the four-unit residential building at 1601 102nd Avenue from a single ownership to two strata properties be approved. Further, that the approving officer be delegated, delegated signing authority for the subdivision as per section 242 of the Strata Property Act.
Thank you. Do you have a second, there? Counselor McFadden. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item eight is our bylaws. Anything?
No bylaws, your worship.
Item nine is the mayor's business. The first item I wanted to bring forward today was on our strategic plan. And I met with Mr. David Marshall from the Fraser Basin Council last week. I advised council a while back that I would be meeting with him to talk about a process for us to go through with council to really look at the strategic priority process for 2014 for us, as we didn't have the strategic exercise that we normally, council had went through each year in December, to at least have a session where we can provide some discussion and direction through to the council and through this gentleman to provide us with the opportunity to get some input into strategic priorities for 2014, not only for ourselves, but for administration. So I met with him last week. He's in the process of putting together a proposal for us to bring forward. I wanted to bring it forward today because I'm hoping that I can lock this down so we can get it moving. Time is obviously of the essence in terms of trying to get this exercise completed. The process that he's indicated he'd like to pursue is really to have individual interviews with each member of council as well as each member of the senior administration. He'll bring that forward with a report. And then from there, we'll have the conversation as to whether we want to have a facilitated session with him as a group or how we want to move it forward from that perspective. But I felt if we could do it on that basis, it helps eliminate the conflicts for scheduling that we all seem to get into and get it done on a timely basis. So, I'm hoping that, as I say, I don't have his proposal in front of me today because he's, I just met, we were finally able to meet last week. He was in town, and he's doing some other work in the region. And so I'm bringing it forward on that basis that I'm looking for council's approval to move forward with it. Counselor Malkinson?
Do you want a resolution, you mean?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at this point, if we can, to get us the approval to move forward with that.
Well, I'd like to move that we agree in principle to what you've just said and that we ask you to, or that council asks you to engage this gentleman to facilitate our strategic planning sessions.
Thank you.
A second, yes.
Discussion? Counselor Parswell?
Yeah, it was my understanding we were going to be engaged in a long-term visioning process, not a one-year. process, not a one-year strategic planning process. Have I missed the ball completely?
Yeah, so when I talked about it, I think really the aspect in terms of doing a long-term, redo, revisit the vision, redo the mission, the guiding principles, I'm worried that in terms of developing that process, we're going to be three or four months minimum in terms of getting it done, and it's going to put us into three months away from the next election in the fall. And so my preference would be to be able to do this exercise at this point, to give some direction for us in terms of how, what we see as those strategic objectives for two thousand and fourteen, and then do the full visioning exercise. None of us, I understand at this table, were involved in that process of the vision, mission, and some people have been involved in the guiding principles. And so to me, that exercise is a really detailed amount of work for us to redo our strategic plan. And so my thought is, I would like to be able to take that process and then move it forward in two thousand, at the end of the year, once the election is forward, and take that as a key piece of new business for the new mayor and council. So that was my thought on it.
I concur with that. Thank you. So for my bent, I therefore don't see the need for this because we've already got a major piece already approved by council, which is beginning the conversation with the community about the fiscal gap. And I think that in itself is such an overarching piece of work that it will fully occupy our staff. So I just offer that reflection.
Sure. So and I, absolutely, to me, the fiscal gap is a significant component of the discussion for us, our quality of our sewer. We got our sewer water. We got about three or four kind of real key components in the year, and I just want to make sure we have some clarity for ourselves and for administration in terms of what are those key priorities, and we agree through that process. So that's why I'm looking at it in terms of trying to do it a little bit differently and do that individual interviews to make sure we're all on the same page, roll that up through to and through with the benefit of administration, and then if we need to, we will do a facilitated session as a result of that, just to provide that clarity through. Counselor Malkinson?
I just think that, Your Worship, a lot of the principles that are involved with the work that is to be undertaken with the fiscal gap will be, in a way, well, you know, we'll be asking a lot of questions about what we, who we want to be in the future and, you know, how we want to get there, i.e., you know, a visioning process. I think that a lot of words on that document will need to be looked at as we're, well, as we're going through our strategic, or sorry, as we're talking about the fiscal gap and the timelines that it's to be presented to the public in the, you know, well, before the end of the year, I believe, is the timeline that was in the, you know, in our last discussion about it. But, well, yeah.
Yeah, the only, and I apologize, right? I wish I would have had the proposal, but the unknown and the uncertainty is obviously the cost of it, and I can't lock that down. But I really want to move forward with this if we can to get it completed, and then it sets us forward for the year as one piece of that.
All I'm saying is that, you know, as Charlie, or sorry, as Counselor Parslow has expressed, that, you know, it doesn't feel that it's really necessary absent a visioning process. I would like to personally express my willingness to entertain a visioning process or some sort of discussion about that this year. So I know it'll be captured in the personal interviews anyway, so that's my two cents, I suppose.
Thank you.
And this is mayor's business, so I'll just be quiet now.
So we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you for that. The next one we have is the user fees and charges bylaw for our New Year's baby, and we need to make a, part of the New Year's baby presentation was a swim pass, I believe. Can I get administration to, do we know what that is?
Through your worship, currently, we provide the New Year's baby with a plate, an engraved plate. I think that is another.
Okay. I'll bring it up. Sorry. So we wanted to give the New Year's baby a swim pass as a token of, as a gift. And so part of that is a swim pass, a lifetime swim pass.
Lifetime swim pass?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a New Year's baby.
A lifetime swim pass.
And he is going to be a great swimmer.
And so it requires a
Or she.
Under our fees and charges, we can't do that unless we get a motion of council to give the New Year's baby a lifetime swim pass.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McFadden.
I was the New Year's baby too.
You don't get a swim pass?
The New Year's baby?
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Discussion?
Wow.
We've declined a lot of people who've asked for swim passes in the past. I don't want to be a bad guy here, but, you know, it's sort of a principled sort of an idea, you know, that we already subsidize a swim pass. I don't know. Someone ease my, ease myself because I'm uncertain about it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
What is the annual dollar value of a child's swim pass? And does such a thing exist, a child's swim pass?
Well, in this case, it wouldn't be a child's pass. It would be a child's pass until
An adult's pass.
An adult, and then it would be an adult's pass. So the concept is a lifetime pass.
So what's the dollar value?
Well, there's no lifetime pass.
Well, you're, so firstly, the price today will be different at the end of the lifetime of the New Year's baby, because, I don't know about you, but I don't anticipate rates going down between now and the seventy years from now.
Twenty-seventies, yeah.
So I couldn't really tell you what it's going to be worth, the net present value of such a thing. But it's going to be signi, this isn't a significant gift because you're going to start at a figure over five hundred dollars a year, and you're going to, it's
Times thirty thousand dollars. Yeah. So I'm using, fair enough comments, Jim. So two thousand, let's say, current price is five hundred dollars a year.
Four seventy-seven twenty-nine, I think, plus tax, so that it rounds up to eleven. And for an adult, seven oh three twenty-nine, plus one hundred. That's the current figures.
Yeah. So I think the gift is excessive.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kenny?
I'm probably going to be a little cheeky here, but if, but if there's not enough room at the pool for that free pass to go in, then that day they wouldn't be able to enter the pool. It's money, like, it's not like someone, a paying customer is going to lose out on going to the pool because this New Year's baby is going to the pool.
That's not the way to
I know, I know it's the, I know it's the principle of it, you know, but I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I'm going to support it.
I think it's cool. I think it's awesome, but I just
So my thought was absolutely, it's, I get that it's on, when you, when you make a recommendation that you're going to give somebody a free pass for the rest of their life, one, you make the assumption that they're going to be, live to a hundred and sixty, and they're going to live in Dawson Creek for the rest of their life.
Go swimming every day.
So we have to, we have to anticipate that it's going to have a cost for whatever it is, as Counselor Parslow has done. But once a year, we get a New Year's baby. And from my perspective, I just thought it was a great opportunity to recognize that besides a silver plaque. So that was my thought, Karen. Counselor Wilber?
Is it with our, I was going to say with our child passes, don't, I think under five, do we, they swim for free, do they not, or under a certain age?
Yes, the pass would become active when the child reached six.
So I think a unique gift for our New Year's baby. We only have one.
Counselor Malkinson?
Every year, we, you know, we went through the user fees and charges policy on the, you know, basis, you know, of public good to private good, you know. And, you know, if we want to do it on this, you know, whole other idea that it's good for, you know, the whole basis being, you know, if it was good for a youth that was at risk to go for swim or something like that, then be more benefit to the general public than, you know, there would be more benefit to the general public than, you know, somebody that was, you know, older, not as much at risk, you know, to use the public facility. So I don't really see the connection between that and what we're doing here. And I, you know, we've, I think done, I think the council's done a good job holding fast, you know, in the wake of these new changes to groups that have asked for waivers and exemptions and stuff like that. There's a group of seniors that we declined in the fall, and I felt the council made the right decision, and I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it now. I, Dale, I think it's a wonderful thing, and I apologize for reining on any sort of idea here, but
That's, no, that's what it's all about. That's what we get to, that's what the great part about having democracy is. Counselor Wilber?
I'm going to add my cheeky. Perhaps by giving a swim pass, we'd prevent a youth from becoming at risk.
Oh, my goodness.
He would have somewhere to go. So I'm supporting this, but that's my cheeky.
Any further discussion?
My cheeky.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. The last item, and it's not on my, and again, I apologize, I was in for not having it on the agenda, but I wasn't here for the agenda setting last week because I was in Vancouver, at the Vancouver Board of Trade meeting, and it was about resource development across our province. It was a full-day session facilitated by the Board of Trade, and I just wanted to give a quick update on three or four items that come out of that meeting that I thought were very interesting. The first thing, when they handed out the agenda, and they had four different facilitated panels during the day, but when they handed out the program for the day, and it showed the map of British Columbia, the map of our province was inverted to show Fort Nelson at the bottom, Fort St. John, Dawson Creek, Prince George, to Vancouver, demonstrating to me, first of all, the importance of the North to this province now in terms of the economic development and the economic future of our province. And the discussion started out that morning, first of all, with a facilitated panel of kind of nationally-recognized economists from Eastern Canada and the Bank of Canada, talking about what's the, what's happening in the economy of British, of Canada and British Columbia. Talked about really what's changing some of the components around our economy right now and the signals around that. The first one was, they talked about was the Canadian dollar and the slide in the dollar going from that dollar down to ninety-seven, ninety-six, and now down and below that ninety-three, ninety-four range. And what they're saying is the recovery in the European economy as well as the US economy is demonstrating the confidence in the investment world with the, these people. And so rather than seeing now Canada as the only safe haven or one of the safe havens in the world for investment, along with Australia and some others, it's now starting to demonstrate that US and the European economies are starting to come back, and so Canada isn't seen as that sole investment safe haven. And as a result of which, it's dropping the Canadian dollar. The benefits of having the lower dollar they talked about, it's going to drive and increase the economy and help the economy both in terms of manufacturing, exports, tourism, retail development. All of those things will have a positive impact, they say, as a result of the Canadian dollar decline. They said that they thought the Canadian dollar would end the year at around ninety-one, ninety-two cents was the estimate, and they feel that it's going to flatten out at some point around ninety-four, ninety-five is where they felt it should be. They said the British Columbia economy in relation to the Canadian economy was at about one point three percent last year versus the Canadian economy at around two point four, two point five. They believe that the British Columbia economy is going to increase this year primarily as a result of exports, tourism, and the resource development, and it'll probably get up in the two percent range or two point two percent range, close to what the national average will be in terms of increase. And they believe beyond that, that the British Columbia economy is going to start to outpace, and it's going to be looked upon as the bellwether province in Canada for the setting of the economic indicators for Canada. And it's primarily driven partly by exports, tourism, but this whole issue around the North in terms of the liquefied natural gas and the natural gas. And it was a strong, strong conversation and discussion by these economists in terms of what the impacts will be to, they believe, British Columbia and Canada in the long term. So I found it very interesting in terms of having that kind of conversation. We had a group of CEOs from British Columbia, same thing, talking about indicators and topics of influence in the province. But two or three things that come out of it for me was the real lack of knowledge and understanding in the rest of British Columbia about the natural gas industry. And because it is, when you think about it, it is an industry that's migrated from, really from Alberta into this region because it's been an industry that's matured in Alberta over sixty or seventy years, and as a result of which, it's understandable. The industry isn't anywhere else in the province of British Columbia, like lumber or like mining or like exports or like tourism. So there's a lack of understanding, and I think that's incumbent upon us as a region to ensure that we do what we can to educate and help educate the rest of the province, to ensure that we see that strong, strong investment occur in our communities. And so that was one kind of takeaway. They're really concerned about the rest of the province in terms of trades and having skilled workers in the region and being able to attract them because they feel that's going to be a real component in terms of developing the industry in the long term. And we certainly have seen that, and we've talked about that. So overall, it was really worthwhile to me to be able to attend that and listen to the conversation and understand. It was amazing to me to see the northeast of British Columbia being the topic of conversation as it relates to the economy of British Columbia. And so it was, as I say, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend. So that's, that's all I have to really talk about today in mayor's business. Any questions? Counselor Parslow?
Not a question, but just a comment. Our chief administrative officer sent out something to council members, an article published in the Tye about this northeast, the LNG. And I think the person who wrote it is attached to Pembina. And there was a graph there that really helped me conceptualize the magnitude of the potential. And quite frankly, it scared me a little bit because the author talked about the, the number of tons of carbon loading of our atmosphere through this LNG project. And I'm sure Jim will correct me, but my impression was that the Fort McMurray operation generates, let's say, a hundred and twenty something or other tons. And the LNG project that we will have, if it fully develops, will be about three-quarters of that loading, which is, and then that doesn't include then the loading that would happen when it's consumed in China. So it's, it's an interest in the, to me, that sort of grabbed the magnitude of what we're talking about, you know? I mean, Fort McMurray is massive, and this is going to be about three-quarters of that amount. Am I correct in saying about three-quarters, Jim?
I don't recall.
Okay, okay, yeah. So it's, there's all sorts of associated issues, I guess I'm saying. And the author was saying that really, if we're going to meet our environmental targets as a province, which are in legislation, we need to really look about how we develop this. Is it all at once, or is it a phased-in process with the very best of carbon-saving technologies which are available? Or will it be done, you know, in a very quick way and with all the environmental consequences? If you haven't read the article, it's well worth the read. It's a very interesting one. But it really, what I'm trying to say, in support of what you're saying, the magnitude of this thing is perhaps beyond comprehension for some of us, but when it's compared to Fort McMurray, it's a good reference point.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think I've tried to talk about that over the last year or four months. Everything I've read and everything I've seen about what's coming is a tsunami. It's a tsunami of economic development that's going to hit northern British Columbia, both the northeast and the northwest. And we need to be aware of that. We need to understand that. I absolutely agree. Thank you. Any further questions on my mayor's business? Diary?
Nothing new on the diary, Your Worship.
Ten one, the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts update?
No update at the moment. They're working, but not much changed from the last time.
Thank you. Consent calendar, strategic priorities chart of
Again, just a placeholder until it's replaced with something else.
Yeah. Question and answer period? Thank you. Item fourteen, we move to our committee of the hall reports. Fourteen one, the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the expense limits for local elections. Counselor Malkinson?
Your Worship, we've had our staff sergeant waiting for a while now. Perhaps we could, and I'm not sure how long fourteen one will take.
Your Worship, we've had our staff sergeant waiting for a while now. Perhaps we could, and I, I'm not sure how long fourteen-one will take. Maybe we ought to move to fourteen-two. I don't know.
Do we anticipate fourteen-one being very long, or is it?
It's, council, at the last meeting, it indicated you might wish to make a submission regarding expense limits.
Okay.
It was put to this committee of the whole, so the council could see if they had a consensus position on that.
Councilor Schuman?
I would move that we just drop it to the bottom.
Very, okay, yeah. So we'll vary the agenda. Fourteen-one will go behind fourteen-seven, so our next item will report from the staff sergeant. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
I was actually eyeing up one of those donuts. I'm trying to decide whether I had time to grab it or not. But thank you very much. I'm sorry. I might grab it on the way up.
We also offer them to go.
I left myself open for that. So, yeah, so, you know, actually, a fairly reasonable month, and, and I focused on the year in, in my report. When it was, it was a very good year, I wasn't sure how long we'd be able to sustain the momentum that we had in terms of, you know, all of the major incidents that occurred over the calendar year were actually resolved by charge. And that was, I don't think I've ever worked anywhere where that was the case. So, you know, and we had some, a number of fairly serious incidents that were, that were, you know, quite concerning when they happened, but the perpetrators of those incidents are actually all in custody, and so that goes a long ways to show, you know, the effectiveness of the, of the, of the guys and gals that are working at the detachment. So that was a good thing. The other thing that I was focusing on was that the community as a whole really seems to be embracing the philosophy of finding a designated driver and of being safe, you know, and, and we actually conducted a road check in December, which was another thing that was kind of unprecedented in that we were unable to find even a single person to give a 24-hour suspension to. And we stopped an awful lot of vehicles during that, during that check. There were some drunk people, but they were all in the passenger seat or the back seat, and so it was just a really, it was a really good thing. And I guess that leads us into the idea that we ended up having no impaired-related or criminal-related crashes that were fatal last year for the entire year. And I think that's another thing that we haven't seen before. Certainly, we haven't seen it very often. And, you know, so we're, we're really hoping that the public will continue to embrace that message and that not put us in a position where we have to charge people for impaired driving. You know, it's been, it's been a pretty, a pretty nice thing to, to see, to not have to go to those calls and stuff like that. We did have two fatal accidents last year, but those accidents were sort of more typically, you know, a momentary lapse in judgment or an equipment failure or those types of things. And so they were kind of genuinely bona fide accidents, just sort of unavoidable and, and tragic, but, 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 yeah. So, so there was a, it was kind of a nice, it was a nice takeaway. And we are kind of on the, on the forefront of our, of our transfer season, and we're not gonna be losing very many people this year. So that's another good thing. And I think that's been one of the reasons, one of the things that we've done, and one of the ways that we've tried to achieve success here has been that we've tried to make it an enjoyable place to work so that people didn't want to leave. And then we have put a whole bunch of investment into training them. And so we've supported an awful lot of training in very specific areas, both for our administrative staff or your staff that work with us, and also for, and also for the regular members that work there. And so people have received all kinds of specific training in virtually every area of policing, and we've really seen that pay off dividends in terms of how effective we've been at combating crime in the detachment. Because we just have got people that are much more experienced on average than what we had one year ago or two years ago, where, you know, the average service range was really quite close to one year or less. And now our average service range is more like three years or three and a half years or something like that. So I mean, it's a vast difference in terms of the experience level and the effectiveness. So we've got guys and gals that are young enough to be enthusiastic and experienced enough to be effective. So it's quite a nice, it's quite a nice sort of place to be. So, yeah, so we're, so we're hoping to continue that, to continue that trend. And we're going to be working with some of our partner agencies, particularly down in Prince George, to encourage them to partner with us in terms of focusing on some of the organized crime that, that remain in the community. And so we're gonna be asking for some assistance from the CFSEU units and the federal and serious organized crime, which is basically federal drug section, stuff like that. That's gonna be one of the approaches that we take to kind of try and mop up, you know, the, or bring down to adult or the organized crime picture that is pervasive in every single community in the country. But nevertheless, that's, that's the approach we're taking. So, yeah, that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Councilor Parswell?
Yes, what is the North District Combined Forces Special Enforcement? What is, what do they do?
That is a unit that is exclusively aimed at combating organized crime, which is usually drug-related organized crime. But they are a provincial unit that is set up in Kelowna on Vancouver Island, in Prince George, and in Vancouver. And so when you read about things like Integrated Gang Task Force down in the Lower Mainland, that's an arm of CFSEU. And in Prince George, the CFSEU unit is about fourteen bodies or something like that. And they are project-based, so they'll go to various communities in the north and they'll conduct, and conduct specific targeted enforcement on particular problems that have been identified by the detachment, so.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? I, I just have one I'd like to raise with you, and it's an issue that I experienced early in December. And I know it's not, so first, it's a traffic issue, so I appreciate it. It's not you guys, but I just wanna raise it for you in terms of conversation or discussion. And it's the amount of traffic we're starting, I, so Seventeenth Street and Alaska Avenue, we get the traffic volumes coming into our community off of Alaska Avenue or the hard highway. And so I had a near, near miss of a large transport truck couldn't get stopped at the lights, it turned red on him, and I was going through making a left. But I, and so I actually took it on my own. I got the name of the vehicle, I contacted the owner, sent him an email and just asked them, and they said they raised it as a safety component with their. But I've had three separate contacts lately from people who have experienced similar situations with their. And so to me, the, my old days of dealing with crashes and ICBC was, the three components that we always dealt with were education, engineering, and enforcement in terms of trying to reduce the risk of crashes at an intersection or at a location. And so I know we've had some conversations in the past. I talked to Jim briefly about it with that particular location. The engineering of it alone, bringing the, my, the decline of the highway speeds into your community, and then at the intersections of the way they, Highway Ninety-seven South and North meet there. There's not a lot of time for the big transports to move their speeds down. And, well, there is if they choose to, but sometimes they don't choose to. And so one of the things I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna talk to our ICBC folks in the loss prevention area to see if there's some ideas that we can work together. We've got our master transportation plan, and so we gotta find a way, I think, to calm that traffic a little bit coming into our community.
Yeah.
And the education piece, I think we need to do some work in terms of trying to promote that messaging of the danger of highway speeds. But the enforcement component as well, Milo, for me is one aspect of it. And I know, I see the guys working Alaska Avenue pretty diligently.
Yeah.
And certainly, I appreciate that. And I just raise it as an, as an issue that, I, I, the old, when are you guys gonna do something before it's too late? And that, when it's, if a transport truck gets somebody in that intersection, it'll be a bad one. They, they tend to slow down. They get Fifteenth Street, they get the lights, they hit Thirteenth Street, they hit the lights, they hit Tenth Street. They're usually slowed down pretty good, but it's that one is the one that I think has got the biggest risk for us in the community of having something bad happen. And so I'm gonna try and do that with, working with our partners, with both the Ministry of Highways and with ICBC and ourselves to see if we can do something. And I raise it just as information.
No, absolutely, no. And so I will raise it with the provincial traffic unit. But in addition to that, the, the extra position that you guys funded for us last year, we rolled out as a municipal traffic position.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if that's a concern identified by the municipality, pardon me, that's the perfect person to go out and conduct some enforcement there and, and to participate in the education component from our side. So she's, she's available to do that. She's working today, in fact, and, you know, so I can go and, and have a conversation about that, and we can make that one of the priorities that she can look at. And that's, like I say, one of, one of the extra positions that you guys funded, so that's the perfect, yeah.
Thank you. Like, as I say, I, you see them out there, I see them working Alaska Avenue, they're diligent about it, and they got a presence out there.
Yeah.
For me, it's the aspect of something bad at that intersection, I wanna do all we can to.
That's, that's a good point.
Councilor Schuman?
So just further to what you were saying about that, I've had several of these drivers of these large trucks talk about the indicator lights that indicate that the light is going to be changing and how that would be beneficial coming into that, those, those outlined intersections. I don't know if that's the answer, but I, I've, I've heard from several now that have talked about, you know, that they can prepare better.
Yeah.
Is it a fifty zone over there?
That's fifty.
Yeah, so.
I know. I know. I'm just saying what I heard.
The location in which they'd have to put, my understanding is the location which they'd have to put those advance warning signals would be far enough back, they'd almost be in the intersection of the John Hart.
Yeah.
It's a tough, tough design area, I think, is part of it. But, so I think we work with everybody and raise that awareness. Is there a way we can calm the traffic, other ways in that area? We just need to think about it, 'cause somebody that's bad, it's got some bad things could potentially happen there.
We see it all the time, them driving right through the, and, and I don't move now until I know they're all stopped. That's just my little way of coping with it, and my children, you do not cross that street until you see them stop, so.
Yeah, no, that's.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for staff sergeant? Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for going early.
Have a good month.
Next item, fourteen point three, we have a report from the fire chief. Morning, Chief.
Good morning. Welcome to 2014. So as, as you see the report, this is pretty much year-end numbers as well. As far as a year-to-date numbers overall from last year, from 2012, 2013 were down slightly. Motor vehicle incidents were down considerably, I guess. Typically, we go to about a hundred, and last year, we went to about eighty-four. So it's, it's a good thing. Also, of those injuries, we, or pardon me, of those MVIs, we've had less injuries that we've attended to as well, so that's, that's a good thing. How to explain it? I don't know. Education, maybe. I don't know. Education seems to be the key to a lot of things, so. But that is the report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? It's great, it's a great signal that the MVAs, both in terms of motor vehicle attendance as well as injuries, are down. That's a, that's a huge issue.
Yep, it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Fourteen-four, we have a report from the Director of Corporate Administration.
Good morning, council. I'm open to questions on anything in my report, but I just wanted to bring up, again, the RFP, the promotional video. We will put it on our next agenda for the Economic Development and綠色委員会 Committee and just get some more input from it down. And then I could put it, put it up here, or we get an RFP for council approval on February seventeen.
And I'll do some further work on it as well with council.
Yeah, through discussions.
Sure.
Any other input is welcome. But besides that, just any questions?
Any questions? Councilor Malkinson?
Oh, it's, 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 it's no matter. I can, I can speak with her later.
Thank you.
With Brenda later, but it's all good.
Thank you, Brenda. Fourteen-five, we have the report from the Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning. One of the things that I wanted to do in the committee of the whole report was just highlight some of the work that was being carried forward from 2013 to 2014. Finance is always working on reporting out things for compliance or legislative, what have you, and then working on budget, of course, which is coming together nicely, which will be presented to council in February. But if you look at the, the details of the report, there's a number of really big capital projects that are being carried forward. Calvin Crook Art Center is being carried forward to 2014. There was still some roadwork from last year that is being carried forward, and some new roadwork will be proposed as well. The Loran reservoirs carried forward as well, and that's a fairly big project, four million dollar project. And then we're, the sewer trunk line, capital project was proposed last year, but the funding package was deferred until a better cost estimate came in, so that's being carried forward as well. So there's a, there's a lot of capital projects on the table still. And also on the operational side, the fiscal gap that was mentioned earlier, that plan is being carried forward, and the water security, public meetings, and then working on the second phase of capital asset management. So it's gonna be another busy year for finance. Never mind what we usually do, there's a lot of big projects. So I just wanted to highlight that for council as we go, coming into budget.
Thank you. Councilor Parswell?
Yeah, I have a, just need your guidance here. In your report concerning, under the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts, project budget to December the thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, it's sixteen one thirty-one, carryover to two thousand fourteen one seven one two. And then you give a breakdown of the funded sources, and then you state the last sentence, and that's where my confusion is. The two thousand fourteen budget will include an additional 1.5 million to complete the project in two thousand fourteen. Is that 1.5 trimmed from the 1.7 carryover, or is that additional to the 1.7 carryover?
That will be in addition to the 1.7 carryover. So the, the first line where I say the budget to December thir-, thirty-first, two thirteen is sixteen point one. Then we're gonna add 1.5, which was the approval that council gave at the, you know, the last meeting.
Right.
So those two are combined and will be brought forward in the two thousand fourteen package. So it gets a little complex when you're talking about carryforwards, because we're talking about budget, which is moving forward, but then we're reporting on what actually happened. So separating the two is, is what I'm trying to do there.
Yeah, so how, me and my obtuseness here, the, the sixteen point one is the project budget.
To December thirty-first.
To December thirty-first, yeah. The carryover, right?
Money left in the budget envelope?
Left, unexpended.
That's right.
And then to meet the last phase, if I can call it, the hopeful last phase of this project, we need the additional 1.5, which council approved.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
And so the total project budget at the end of the day is going to be seventeen point six.
Eight, seventeen point?
Seventeen point six, or so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? It's triggered me to one comment on the capital for our sewer trunk line. And I think we're close to locking down my visit to Ottawa. And at the same time, when I was going, I saw the opportunity because I got a letter from CN about the transferring. So we're working on that meeting as well, to, so hopefully, we can ensure we get that process unfolded and have the approvals from CN for access and the easement and all of that stuff. And hopefully, we can move that, and help administration move that forward and get it done in two thousand fourteen. So I, sorry, I should've, if I updated you guys on that at the last meeting or not. Thank you. Shall I? Any further questions?
I'll just keep my fingers crossed for your smooth talking with a very helpful MP.
Yeah, it's been, we really are optimistic and hopeful that the federal infrastructure funding, we can make a case that they're gonna help us. And man, whatever we can get will be a help.
Sure. Sure.
Right? Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, uh, report number 14.6.
Good morning. So firstly, I guess I'll, uh, talk about the, uh, building permit reports, because that's always a good news story. And, uh, so the final figures for 2013 is we had just over $55 million worth of, uh, permit values, uh, issued. That's, uh, about 146 permits, 243 different dwelling units, um, with quite a mix from single-family to duplex to multifamily and suites. So, uh, yeah, it was a very, very busy year in that, uh, area of the community, and, um, no signs of that slowing down, so probably another big one coming up, so, yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's good news. Um, a couple other things I wanted to touch on is, uh, we have some year-end stats. Uh, we look at water usage for the, uh, for the year. We're right around 2 million, 2.2 million cubic meters, uh, total for the year. And just, just so we know that, uh, our extraction permit allows around 3.3 million from our source, so we're about two-thirds, uh, capacity on our extraction permit. Um, and really the good news that I, I see out of that is, is the, uh, increasing use on our reclaim. We're starting to see that kind of build throughout the year, and, and we're seeing it again right now. Um, now we're seeing that reclaim usage higher than some of those other water uses, and that's what we had always envisioned, and we hope that trend continues, so. Um, when we move, uh, you know, 230-plus thousand cubic meters out of the reclaim, and, uh, that's, that's good news, so. We hope to see that, uh, use continue on. Um, and just, uh, an update, uh, as you were mentioning just before I came on the sewer trunk line. So we have had some correspondence with CN Rail on the easements. Uh, I did get some answers back late last week, but there was still a couple of unanswered questions, so I'm looking for, for that. But at least it looks, uh, I guess the good news is it didn't take six months or more for them to get back to us, so, um, things are moving forward, and, and, uh, so that's, that's a good news. So we should hopefully have some further answers on that, uh, um, in the coming week or two. So we'll keep you updated on that. So is there any questions, uh, on the report?
Counsel, uh, so Jim?
Uh, just to make a comment regarding secondary suites, which has been an issue for you, you had a delegation about it. Uh, last year you had 243, the year just completed, you had 243 dwelling units added. Thirty-eight of them were secondary suites, about 16% uh, of your new, um, dwelling units were secondary suites. So, uh, that's a mix that Counsel's going to be looking at. Um, this is what the, in our current regulations, this is what the market is providing, about 16% or so in secondary suites, so, uh, it's an interesting baseline for your perspective.
Counselar Parslow, did you have a question?
No, no, I'm, I'm jumping ahead to Sean's presentation. I just realized I'd, I'd flipped to Kevin's and I'm waiting for Sean.
Any further questions for Kevin? So I want to make one. I want to make, it's not a question, but it's a comment. Um, we're pretty much completed our, uh, meetings with the developers. We've had Counsel, uh, along with Kevin, we've met with about probably eight different developers, realtors, investors. Uh, I did get a response back to a letter I wrote to a particular, uh, developer in our community. And so the common, there was one common, common, uh, comment that we got through every one of those developer meetings, and it was the skill and expertise that was brought to our city in the development by Kevin. And, uh, it was absolutely, uh, to me, outstanding to see that kind of feedback from people who are interacting with us as a community to demonstrate that we are providing the service. And it was not us, it was Kevin in terms of his, uh, area and him personally. And so I think it's absolutely a credit to what we have in, uh, our community. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, and Counselar Parslow, did you have a question specific to Sean's report? Because I can deal with that. I can answer that.
Okay, the, to do with the Park Hill low-level issues.
Yes.
The report, uh, responded, you know, to the Park Hill low-level after loss of communication. Communication upgraded with a new ready to complete the loop through WTP to water sales to Park Hill. Currently looking at alternative backup dialer option in the event we lose communication again. Can you expand on that backup? I'm aware of the issue.
Right.
What, uh, how will that backup assist?
Well, I think it's just that, uh, it is exactly that, is it is a backup, so if one was to fail, we would have a redundancy.
It would be automated, yes.
Yes, exactly. And that's, um, this is the first time that I'm aware of that this communication issue had occurred, and, and it was kind of a, a series of, of events, uh, communication, and then also some internal communication within the Park Hill reservoir itself that led to that low level. Um, so, you know, again, it's, it's what you do when you find out that there's these, these weaknesses. And so it's, you know, including the redundancy and those issues to hope that it doesn't happen again. So that's, yeah, essentially some automated redundancy. So, all right.
Thank you. Um, and so I want to add one more piece to this, and that is the absolute, I think, outstanding, uh, effort and work and results that were delivered by our staff, uh, you guys, uh, Sean, the public work staff, the hired equipment people through December, uh, and early January with what we, uh, experienced in our community with the snow removal and how that was dealt with. I thought you guys did an amazing job. And during a period where we could have, uh, been having our eyes clawed out by folks, um, people developed reasonable expectations, and I think was, that was demonstrated by you guys demonstrating, one, you cared about what you were doing, and they did a great job. So again, compliments to all of you guys.
Thank you very much. And, and we did, um, go down to Public Works there prior to the two concerts that we had, and, and had, uh, you know, I, I forgot to mention that, uh, Mayor, Counsel, and Ryan at the Encana Center had provided some tickets for everybody involved with snow, contractors, parks, public works, airport, all that side. And, and we did, uh, certainly try and express that gratitude, because I know from administration, we certainly have it, because without those guys, we, we can't get it done. And, uh, it was very well received, and they were very thankful. So again, uh, we will pass it along, and, and, uh, it's been a crazy month, and now, now look at us.
Now we have room to pile snow.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, just to clarify on that, of course, the fees and charges, waiver policy does not apply to Encana Center, because we have a standard global contract for the global spectrum, who are free to distribute tickets as they wish. Tickets were distributed to our employees, uh, but also to the contractors who had worked. And, uh, I was at the concert pleased to say that a number of the contractors did, uh, not only the staff, but a number of the contractors did, uh, take advantage of those tickets and come. And one particularly, Pat, um, O'Reilly's wife, Robin, uh, were, um, part of the attraction, and they danced the night away. When everyone moved forward to the stage near the acoustic set, it opened up room for dancing, and Pat totally took that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Uh, item 14.7, we have the report from the Director of Community Services. Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to say when Mr. O'Reilly was dancing his night away, I was trying to hold on to my shingles and siding. I come from Ontario and Winnipeg, see a lot of wind.
His wife was there dancing with us.
I left my husband at home to hold down fort, too.
So, and a couple highlights I wanted to push forward, and then I, I wanted to speak a little bit about the Montreal Canadiens alumni visit, and about the bid package that went forward on Friday. Uh, just, um, around the aquatic center, we mentioned it last time, is that it's, it's a very critical year for us around strategical planning, working with Counsel. Uh, there's been a bit of leveling out in, in the number of people utilizing the pool, and we, we believe it strategically around, um, some of the success of the new pool in Grand Prairie. Uh, so we're, we're looking at working in consultation, uh, to do some real, uh, I guess we'd call it soul searching at this point, but the numbers are still very high for an aquatic center at that stage, and, you know, we have some cross numbers that we, we'll also be able to share with Counsel in the next month as we move forward with that. Uh, success around the lifeguard apprenticeship program, a very successful program. Uh, we have had our first two hires, and thank you to Duncan and staff for working through that process, and, uh, I think we're, we're seeing some good results back there, uh, around leveling of some staff. Uh, around the walking track, we see, uh, a great usage, and I think, uh, during this transition of a lot of ice and had a lot of inability to keep, uh, you know, that ice off every morning, we're seeing a huge increase in, in the walking track, which is great. Uh, so, three key times there, and I think you, you would probably be able to say that most of that is around our seniors, and then the family time taking place after the five to six push, so. Uh, some good numbers that we'll, we'll continue to work with. A lot of interest around, uh, some of the programs that were done, but highlighting the Licensed Childcare Winter Fund Program. I, I can't say enough about the creativity of that group and how they keep those kids active and, and the visits and places they get to. Kid sport, uh, is a critical component within our community, and, um, the number of people and the money raised and the support that they push kids through, uh, a highlight, and I think Counselor Schuman is in, involved heavily with that program, so kudos to that group and, and the work that's done within our community to ensure that, uh, it's affordable for kids to play sport. Uh, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of creative ways that associations and, and volunteer groups find ways to make sure that, uh, kids get to play. Uh, but this is a great program, and we need to continue to support this one through. Uh, under winter maintenance of our parks program, what, you know, what an extreme. I, I can't say enough that, you know, every effort would have been thought to get where, you know, we could get some outdoor ice, but just when we slow down long enough to get, you know, maybe some time, it gets too warm. The ideal time for making ice is usually 10 to 15 below, and, and, uh, but the good news is that, my understanding is that the oval track is up and running, and at least the speed skating group is, is making those efforts to maintain that. Uh, they had a, just a tough time getting off the ground this year. Uh, way too much snow, way too much blowing, and then it melted, and I was even, you know, watching Lloyd Minster, who hosted Hockey Day in Canada, they built a beautiful outdoor rink, and everything was perfect till this, the, the weather popped up and warm, and they actually had bales of hay and, and cones on the ice because, uh, the ice was melting. So it's a tough one, and I think Counsel will have to address that as we move forward into this strategic year around effort and time and money, and, and result of what we get from it. And I did, uh, reiterate that we've had some great success in the public skate this year, just because of consistency and, and knowing that those dates are always there, and, and families are starting to take huge interest in that. Um, under sustainability, one note, uh, recently approved BC Hydro-funded study, uh, looking at the energy efficiency opportunities with our, our water system. And I know Matt's working very closely, uh, with John on that, and, uh, we see some significant efficiencies around that project, so I'll, I'll have Matt come in and, and update us on that. And it's really, uh, both the raw water and waste, uh, water side for our system, so good news around there. Um, I'll leave the safety report side for that. I brought Duncan with me as well, uh, if there's questions around the safety side. Like anything in the WorkSafe side, um, you have your blips, and it just takes one critical incident or one accident that, uh, that can throw those rates up. So if there's questions around that, uh, certainly Duncan's expertise to, to give us some input there. Um, strategic priorities, the union contract, as we said, was completed. Crescent View Park, I just talked to Darcy this morning. Will David has completed those plans. I need to meet with him this week. And then I, I hope to be able to bring that forward to Counsel before going for additional public consultation and that back to the community. Um, and the expansion as it is, it's, uh, moving forward, waiting for some ministry approval. So I just wanted to highlight a couple things, uh, coming up. The Greatest Stars, uh, with the Montreal Canadian Old Timers, uh, this is one that was guaranteed through the city, and I can, I can sit and report probably out three weeks prior to that. This not will just, you know, ensure that we, we get our, our money back through that, but I think the Senior Canucks have a great opportunity for some fundraising in the community. It's a very good group of people forwarding it. Megan Pickett from our side is spearheading the day-to-day operations and working with Sylvia out of Montreal. And the, um, seniors have stepped to the plate to ensure that they, they'll do everything to ensure that, 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 that it's a success. Uh, to date this morning, there's over 400 pre, tickets sold, which is great, and a walk-up hockey crowd, really. Um, and around those bids, really, we're looking for 1,000 people at the $20 range ticket side. And within that, I think that, uh, the seniors feel very confident that they'll have, uh, close to 100 corporate sponsorship tickets sold at $200 a ticket. And, uh, behind the bench areas, uh, almost, uh, between 50 to 80 at $100. So exceeding that, and, and I understand, as I spoke with, uh, the Senior Canucks this morning, uh, they've already raised over $5,000 in corporate sponsorship additional to that. So I think it's going to be a great event. Not only that, uh, we worked with Minor Hockey to roll out. It'll be basically, once those numbers are met, we'll, we'll see as many of those kids as we can get in there for free as well. And that's, will be through Jersey Day or the two-for-one tickets, as long as you're dragging one of your parents out with you, or a grandparent with you to the game, uh, someone will be able to, uh, get in there. And our aim is to allow kids to see that, uh, that happen as well. So that's good to report out, and, and that date is Friday, uh, February the 7th, which is a great night. Uh, I think it's right before playoff starts, so, um, the Senior Canucks, I think, will be very happy to get that one done and raise some money. And finally, just wanted to update, uh, I can't say enough about the bid committee. Um, this package, uh, ended up 118 pages. It is probably the best document, bid document I've ever seen us put together. Um, Jim will attest, I've been in this game for a long time. Uh, but the effort that was put together, um, by a number of people, the bid package was 118 pages. The supporting documents were well over 200. Uh, we have legacy in place around everything from, uh, airport, uh, arrivals to departures to room accommodations, um, right across the board, uh, plus two videos that went with it. One was the, uh, video that was put together when the national women were in, and then the successful 2012, uh, video went in as well. Um, we have supporting documentation, um, from that 2012 event. I, I feel very confident in the due diligence that was done in the budget, and, and I'm very positive that we're going to get a great response and some good review of this. Uh, the letters of support that came in, uh, ranged right from the premier's letter, uh, which is significant in regards to, to, has Ryan always believes that, he believes that should be attached to a check, but I, I'm always waiting for that to happen. Um, right through our MLA support, um, we had, uh, we had letters of support. We've already secured seven teams in our hotels. That is huge in regards to the significance of that, securing of the IHF officials and all of the, of the on-ice officials and the Hockey Canada Group. Uh, we were scrambling three months up to the event last time in 2012 to, to finalize and secure those bids. Uh, diversified a step forward and, and given us a, a great bid in regards to ensuring, and, and one of them was international pickup. Um, we, we know we have access into Fort St. John, and we also have access into Grand Prairie and into Dawson Creek, uh, from, from Vancouver. So we have a number of ways to get the people in. Uh, it's all been promoted through. Uh, diversified has guaranteed, uh, the bus. Uh, brown chevilles have guaranteed the ground transportation. Um, the hotels are in place, the contracts for both the Memorial and Encana are placed. That is like, and as we said in our 2012, it's, that's the baking of the cake. The sprinkles are, are just unbelievable in regards to how we would host that event. Uh, we're looking at a huge community, if, if awarded, a huge community festival around the culture of the event internationally. Uh, many would remember the international light we used to have. Uh, we're looking at, uh, spearheading that in, in regards to a kickoff, and then working with the school board in regard to the cultural experience that could happen from an international perspective of hosting these teams. So just not games, but a city event, which is really cool. Uh, we have huge, uh, support all the way from tourism. Uh, we've looked at the link and have a great letter from, uh, the Canada Winter Games, which we feel is a great legacy roll-off of that, uh, back through. Um, we believe that that legacy can help us grow in regards to coach development, uh, player athlete development. Uh, so we're working very closely with them. So it's more than just the host of a game, it's what we can do for long-term legacy. Uh, right across the board, uh, we have some awesome, uh, intangible letters. Uh, one was written by the Henderson family, and I go back to, uh, Tyre and Kevin gave up their home back in 2009. Uh, four hockey players from the national team moved in. Uh, great experience. Tyre's daughter, uh, started hockey after that, uh, both, uh, Kevin and, uh, and, uh, their daughter was involved as junior hosts and hosts of the, the teams at the 2012. Uh, a secret's not out anymore, but we can say it here, but Hudson was also puckster. Uh, so family was engaged all the way through, and, uh, my understanding from that intangible that if we get Team Sweden, that, uh, Tyre's, Tyre's already suggested she will be our Swedish host, as she does speak Swedish. Um, we have letters of support from, uh, national women that attended, uh, Jennifer Botterell, Sammy Joe Small, and Legacy. Uh, we have letters from Hockey Canada in regards to Joanne Hughes, who figured we hosted the Greatest U18. So, uh, this package that went out, um, I'm feeling more than confident that we are so far ahead than the 2012 bid that I, I would think we'd be at least considered in that group. So, uh, saying that to Becky Turner, who, uh, was holding her breath when we converted it to PDF on Friday at 4:15, and it kind of jammed up, uh, because it was so big. Uh, the bid was officially accepted at 4:59, uh, one minute prior to deadline. Uh, we had actually, uh, spoke with them because of our challenges with our power outages earlier, that we had, uh, an extension to that. that we had an extension to that, but Jim said, let's make sure we try and get that in, and we did. So, to Becky, to everyone that looked at this bid package, if anyone wants to have a look, please come and see me. And we hope to hear by January 31st that we're shortlisted and considered, and everything would be in place, and we would know if selected. I think it's the end of March, so we would have a lot of time to prepare. And media's all over this one. We did a CBC interview the other day. Thank you for your worship, for pushing that one on to me. And locally, we're getting a lot, and I, you know, the local media did a lot of good work for us during the 18s, and, you know, when you can just send those good news stories on as a package, it looks like a great. So I wanted to thank council again. The deadline was tight, but the team came through, so thank you for that. So, any questions?
Thank you, Barry. Questions, comments? Jim?
Apparently earlier in his presentation, Barry asked me to confirm that he's been in this game a long time, so I will confirm he's my oldest department head by 20 years.
Not a problem. I'm very proud to be.
And on the bid, although we're not certain of everyone in the game, we are now aware of a couple of folks who have made themselves aware, or made themselves visible, St. Patty's, one is Niagara Falls, one is Hamilton, New Brunswick, so we are, we're in, we're in a competition.
I just wanted to say you did a really great job on the CBC interview, also, I heard, Jack.
So, any questions related to the report?
Councillor Farquhar?
Yeah, going back to the Ken Barret Aquatic Centre, I know that staff are wrestling with this issue. And I think it's important to say that there are some things that have happened that are beyond the control of staff that impact, that have negatively impacted swimming pool. I'm referring to the redrouting of the pool and the lawn closed down. I mean, so I hope they've got that perspective. It isn't them, it is the unfortunate circumstances, because people get into habits, and they get into the habit of attending various recreation things, and as soon as you, the facilities are no longer available, it breaks the habit, and it takes an awful lot of work to restore that, because some of, I know quite a few of these people found alternative things, and they've got into the habit of those alternatives, and wrestling them away from those back to the pool is going to be a task. And certainly, whenever, I've gone to the East Link facility with my grandkids, there's lots of Dawson Creek people there. But some of it is, I understand from staff, that the, some of the Alberta patrons of our pool are now, because they've got this facility in Grand Prairie, are switching direction there. But one of the things, in the spirit of that sort of people get into the habits of things, now I've talked to maybe Duncan or you, I forget, one of you, that has there been a serious sort of review of when the annual maintenance of the pool occurs, because that involves a shutdown as well. I mean, I'm just wondering if, you know, is it a sacred cow that it's always in September? What do other pools do? When do they have theirs? Is there benefit for doing the annual maintenance at another time of the year? I'm just throwing that out for consideration, and I guess your reflections on that.
Yeah, I think that's part of the strategical review we're looking at, councillor. You did bring that forward, and Duncan and I have chatted around that. You know, when is the best time? You know, when does it impact with school in, school out? When's the best time for us in regards to water? You know, we're dumping in, we could be in a water shortage, so it's just our restrictions, right? So, well-intended to review that in our discussions, and certainly well-taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Barry, great job on, sitting watching last week, the flurry of activity and all what you guys put into that. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we'll pick back up to 14-1. We have the memo from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the election limits on the local elections. Expense limits, sorry, on local elections?
Well, kickoff?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, Jim made sure that I read this material. That's only just a joke. Yeah, I did read this, and it was, it was interesting. So there's two aspects, I guess, that grabbed my attention. Obviously, you know, there's third-party involvement, third-party representation, and then there's the allowable expenses, both for mayor and for councillors. And as it relates to the amount for councillor election expenses and mayor election expenses, you know, my understanding from discussions I am aware of at UBCM is that lower mainland municipalities, there's certain problems there that we don't have, and they're not, they were not problems in a sense that, I guess they are for some, because they're, a lot of ethnically-based groups, okay, are very, very, what's the word, exuberant or diligent in securing funding and this, that, and the other. And we don't want, I don't think we want in this province a culture whereby running for council or mayor is only there for those who've got benefactors or deep pockets. So I think that as a principle, we want participation in local elections to be affordable to all, you know, within reason. So I think that's an important principle. But I'm persuaded that really we shouldn't again have one approach suit everyone or fit all. I'm kind of leaning towards the Saskatchewan model, that each municipality sets its own expense limits. I mean, right now, each municipality sets the, for instance, the stipend for mayor, stipend for councillors. Why couldn't this matter be, why can't municipalities be empowered through provincial legislation to set the expense limits for councillor and for mayor? So that's where I have, I have grabbed the Saskatchewan idea there. As relates to third-party, I, my view from thinking about this on Sunday, these are local elections. I don't think there should be any third-party involvement. In other words, we, whether it be an oil company, a particular business interest, or any, any group, whether they are placing third-party advertisements, I think they should be prohibited, or engaging in tally marketing of a candidate, whatever. And I believe, and I stand to be corrected here, I think Quebec has some strong positions in that regard, which I tended to lean towards. So I'm just putting a pitch for affordable for all, empowerment of municipalities to set the spending limits for elections, for councillors and mayor, and no third-party involvement. I'm just throwing that, that's where I am at, but open to your persuasion.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so I did read it also. It was a pretty big read, but I actually agree with you.
Oh, good.
And
Let me just mark this page.
I agree with him.
We agree a 90% of stuff.
Anyways, and, and just to
You're teaching a lot now, like you did with Mike Bernie over there.
And just to comment, that, the Saskatchewan model was pretty favored around the UBCM table also. So, yeah, and, I mean, the idea of us setting, setting our own, our own limits, I like that. I think that could be, that could work, certainly because there's such a huge difference in our, like, the one-size-fits-all. I don't, I don't even know how they can do that to make it work. But, yeah, and the third-party thing, like, I don't know how much we even get into that kind of stuff around here. I know there was a group that sort of took up my cause a little bit in the last election, and I don't know if I was comfortable with it or not, really. Like, it was kind of awkward. But, yeah, so I agree with Charlie on this, and see what the rest of you think.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Well, I had a couple of considerations on this paper over the weekend as well, and I suppose I ought to, you know, Charlie's, you know, broached a few of them quite well, I think. I, you know, as far as the affordability point goes, you know, which I, you know, I really think it's important that we keep to the, you know, principle of making it easy, you know, making it accessible for somebody that's seeking office to get there, you know. I see the extra requirements for reporting, and I don't know, there's some mention of it in the paper, and I just, I hope that that's balanced against the need to ensure that there aren't unnecessary obstacles in getting to office. But, you know, there's that point. There's also the question of, you know, on the question of limits, you know, each community setting its limits. I'm not certain what the climate is like in Saskatchewan, but I certainly wouldn't want any group of people in the community thinking that the big bad council is setting their own limits to, you know, work to their advantage. I, I'm not sure what the perception would be like, but I'm, you know, I'm certainly not in favor of a one-size-fits-all, you know, one-limit-fits-all for everybody in the community, but there must be a way that per capita or a per-region thing could be administered as well. That's just another route that we could take, apart from the individual council deciding for each municipality or electoral area. Oh, gee. Yes, and there's another note in the, in the paper about the requirement for third-party sponsors to have to have their name on each bit of advertising that was purchased. I suppose I'd like to express my distaste for that. I, you know, generally the idea of third-party involvement, you know, I think that, I've heard it said before that people think that businesses ought to be allowed to vote or something like that, and regardless of that, I think it's indicative of a, an environment where, you know, businesses, you know, I think that elected officials really need to reach out to businesses to grab their, to grab their opinion today. And I think that, you know, prohibiting them from being involved or, you know, sort of closing that out might close some doors for discussion as well, you know. And I also wonder how that would, you know, this requirement for third-party, or sorry, this requirement for sponsorship to also be mentioned on the advertising. I wonder if that would, I didn't actually read the, you know, it's all laid out quite well, but I'm wondering if a person that paid for their own campaign personally would have to say that it was paid for by themselves, by themselves. I don't know. I want it to be simple, I suppose. That's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any further comments? So for me, having just experienced this over the last three or four months, the first time of doing this, and having read the information, there's components in that I absolutely agree with. The part I don't understand is the rural-urban divide of the demands of what takes place in a large, large urban area where they run slates and they run party almost, and how that impacts what they need to do in order to then raise the dough to be able to finance that process. And I honestly am above the belief in the more rural communities, and perhaps it's something that's dealt with through our NGLA or the NCGLA in terms of setting some of those things, but I don't think you buy, in a small community, your way into office. I think the quality of candidates is what delivers the local electorate to be able to support and make their decision. And so I got some nervousness about putting parameters around influencing democracy
Yeah.
in terms of how people get to vote and get to decide that. But I do, I absolutely do believe that there's a difference in terms of what I've seen from the urban-rural, and how do you manage that. But I'm less concerned with people raising money to try to run for office, but, and I don't think it should be restrictive to individuals simply because they can't afford the campaign, but I don't think you buy your way into office either in a small community. I think the quality of the candidates, and that's evidenced by this room.
What?
The quality candidates.
I don't get it. Just kidding.
So for me, that's just, I just, I honestly believe that the rural-urban divide is the big issue in the rural communities. Don't, people that are running for offices in the rural communities don't get elected because they raise the most money and are able to buy the best campaign. That's just my thought.
So, I understand that you've been invited to make a submission, so we need to talk about the process of that and the content of the submission.
So, perhaps we could just capture our comments. I heard you over there typing.
So do you want me to take that, we'll take the notes. I'll put something together for, on behalf of council, based on what we've heard in terms of some consensus around that, some of the models that we've seen as referenced by you guys, and we'll bring that forward and we'll circulate it to you guys, and then you can provide some editorial input into it if you choose, and then we'll send it out on that basis?
There's a lowest common denominator here that I think we can all agree to.
Yeah. No, I think there's some consensus there.
I don't know that we have to agree. I think we can all
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying.
All of our comments, like your comment versus my comment, can all be
Oh, okay. Conflicting comments.
I don't think that we have to
Doesn't the council need to advocate?
No, I don't think so.
We'll pull it together and send it out to you guys, and then you can add to it if you like, and then we'll do it on that base if that works for you.
Sure.
They ask for comments. It doesn't, we don't have to be an increment on that. We will provide them with our comments.
Do you want to do it all on your own? Do you want to do it individually?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
We could.
We can submit a document with all of our
Yep.
comments on it. It doesn't have to be
Okay.
something that you and I specifically agree on.
Okay. We'll pull that together.
And it has to be on by the 31st, please.
Wouldn't be very good.
And there's a deadline on the 31st.
We'll get it. We'll get it off for you.
Okay. All right.
Councillor Wilber?
I was just wondering with that deadline, if we're going to provide feedback, I'm just, it says it must first return to a regular meeting prior, so do we have to have another meeting prior to submitting?
If we can just pop back into it.
But if you're going to be okay that your input's been captured by what the mayor puts together, then I can't see why it needs to come back.
So though, in spirit of what's just been shared, do we need to have a resolution?
To agree to whatever.
We're in the Caldo.
Do, yeah, when, do we need to go back into regular meeting and have a resolution in this regard, Jim?
Well, you could or you could not do that, but since your intention is to send all of your views rather than a consensus view, I'm not sure that you need to do that, because you do all have the option of sending your own in if you wish.
It's going to be a confusing document, yeah.
Well, just to encapsulate everybody's opinion and views and what they've asked for, so, rather than everybody sending it in individually.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any further discussion or conversation on election expense limits? Thank you. Media question, period.
Election, sorry, I just got one. Sorry, this is my apologies for being late, but I just wanted to know for the report number 14008 from the Director of Corporate Administration, reappointment of election officials, and report number 14009 from the Director of Environmental Sustainable Development, re- Environmental Sustainable Development, redevelopment permit number 14-01, Amendment to Canadian Tire, 11624, 8th Street. I guess I just, I might be wrong here, but I guess were those passed sort of without any kind of an input on them or?
That's right. Yeah. Any further questions from the media? We don't have, we're not recessing to closed?
No.
So I just want to add one comment before we, if there is no further business. And that's, so one of the things for me is, I'm going to, I always want to try to be as transparent as possible. And I'm feeling awful about putting you guys in the position of the mayor's business under those user fees. Because I shouldn't have done that. I shouldn't have put you in the position to vote on an issue that was, didn't carry the detail or information ahead of time. And that was my mistake in putting that forward under mayor's business. And I commit to try to not do that again in the future to put council in that position. So I apologize to you guys for that. Thank you.
About Terry, he's hard to, all right, just this one.
Well, under our business, everybody should come with the information and prepared. And I certainly have tried to do that with my mayor's business. Last week being away, it kind of was a wreck. So again, I apologize. Any further business?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, opposed, carry. Thank you.